With the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, average Tuesday, September 13th. To order, please, roll call.
Trustee Brynag Franklin Whitwer.
Here.
Hollenbeck Derek Pumbier.
Yes.
Kaperway, oh, she's gone, sorry. McNally.
Here. All right, so we have four of us, and that's enough for a quorum tonight. That'll change here. We'll get everybody back and find somebody for our, to join our ranks. Let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Okay, Lisa, can you tell us if this meeting has been properly hosted?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Omenson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, I think we're good to go. I want to start off, I've asked Terry Johnson, who is the Chief of the Cambridge Area Fire Department, to come up and give us an update on how the fire department is doing this year. Welcome, Terry, if you could introduce yourself.
Terry Johnson, Chief at Cambridge Fire. I guess, to start out, we had 185 incidents or calls last year, this year we're on pace for about 210, so it's up a little bit. We have 31 current members. We did last night, had one of our Assistant Chiefs take a job with Madison Fire, so he's leaving our department. He's will be quite missed. We did lose another member, she completed her nursing stat, nursing education, and she's taken a job at the UW. What else would you like to know, Mark?
How are you doing on, with your, your equipment? I know you have given us the budget.
Yeah, we do have, we just got squad late last year, so that arrived. We do have Engine 17 now, is the 2003, it's 19 years old. We're looking into the chassis, and they put together that at this point. Would be a two-year build on it from this time. I've had talked to the Commission about that, to get that updated. It's the truck that goes out to most calls, it's got the most miles, most rust and things. It's one of our most dependable trucks at this point, but we have to keep them dependable when they get to be 20 years old.
Okay, and how are you doing with volunteers? And, and the reason I ask that is because we've had a couple of referendums, and they have, they didn't pass. Well, they did, but not totally, and so.
Well, we're maintaining about 30, usually it's between 31, 30, 31, 32. Currently, we're at 31, so, but we do have several new members that are in school right now, getting completed, so they can give us their, their full, full benefit of what they can give us at this point. They have to go through a couple of different classes before they can respond to calls. So that's, that's happening at this point.
Okay. And anything else that you can think of?
Well, the, you know, the referendum's passed, everybody except Oakland at this point, the, but the problems have not gone away. We still have the issues and the problems that we have for the reason for the referendum, so that's a big issue. There's the issues in there with space, staff, or safety, long-term health care. We just found out that the actual fire gear that we, we wear does have PFAS in it, so they've given us some direction as to what to do with that, to try to minimize the exposure with that. So.
Okay. Questions from?
Yeah, I do, I have one. I know the air handling system is old on that, that building, is there any talk about upgrading that air handler?
Well, we're putting in the, the Commission is okay to put in the flim event system, it's the system that hooks up to each truck.
Okay.
And then when you drive the truck out, it disconnects automatically, and so that, as the trucks are running in the building, they'll be ventilated.
That'll help a little bit anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, one of the big issues with the building is the, the ventilation system. You start the diesel truck in the fire apparatus bay, and the whole building gets full of diesel fumes, so it's, it's a big problem. Lot of long-term health care detriments from what, from our building.
All right.
I have a question.
Yep.
Since you know the truck is going to need to be replaced, the one piece of equipment, have we started applying for grants or doing fundraising? Has the, the fire department set aside money for that, or, or what's going to happen there?
Well, that's up to the Commission to pay for the, the truck. That's, that's their, our job is to respond to calls, prepare the equipment, and go through training. It's up to the Commission to, we're volunteers, we don't have time to, to spend a whole bunch of time running it. We do have a few grants, we've had grants for different gear, Y-LAN gear, our gear, that type of thing, but that's something we'd have to talk to the Commission about.
So, Mark, is there someone on the Commission that is, like, putting some attention towards that? Since we know this is going to be coming up, and so that, you know, the Commission can maybe get ahead of it a little bit?
Well, I can tell you that the focus right at the present time, and I'll talk a little bit about it later, is the budget for this, this upcoming year. And then after that, I'm sure I can work with Mark and, you know, Terry to see what, what we can do.
Yeah, we, we met with Senator Baldwin's representative about the building, trying to get some grants for the building. Mark Cook and I met with a gentleman there, and so that, that's kind of in the works, but it didn't look real promising. The, all the grants for, in that particular program were already designated for next April, and there was nothing in the federal budget at that point to, to continue the program at this point, so.
I know the EMS, and this is EMS now, but Paul had done some work in that area, and we, we found out that we were not successful, so they have been submitted, so we are trying. We are trying.
Yeah, we will help the Commission in any way we can with these types of things, but it's, our, our job is to respond to the calls.
And I appreciate that, you actually in 2007 responded to a call at my house, so, and, and I appreciate everything that you guys did.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Terry, thank you very much, appreciate you coming by.
Yep. Danny, any questions, just please contact me anytime, if you'd like a tour of the facility, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay, we're going to now move into the public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? How many would like to talk to this evening? One, two, three, show of hands if you want to talk. Okay, two and a half minutes, we can do this.
And they did hand out to you, from Carol Sapienza, the update for tourism. I didn't have any time to put on the agenda, but I did hand it out to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a quick hello.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Carol Sapienza, I'm a Cambridge resident and the Board Secretary of the Jefferson County Tourism Council. Just giving a quick update, normally I do it every six months, every quarter, something like that. You are a community partner with the Jefferson County Tourism Council. We have a half a spread in the guide this year, and we're starting to think about and work on next year's guide. Thirty thousand were printed, distributed all over. Let's see, what can I tell you? We, Discover Wisconsin, the county got into a three-year contract with Discover Wisconsin, and the episode, the TV episode was just this last weekend. It was very nice, not as much Cambridge information as I'd like to have out there, but I did see Nick from Dancing Goat kind of dancing in the beginning, and then Jefferson Speedway was also kind of highlighted at the end, so that was pretty awesome. And then in April, they did do a digital short, which highlighted the arts in Cambridge, Marcus Goodlarick was in it, Cambridge Wood Fire Pottery, and they talked about the history of row pottery, which was pretty amazing. Also, there's a logo here that Cambridge is considered a 2022 Choice Destination, so you can use that logo on any promotional materials that you like, on the website, just kind of makes us look cool, you know, so. New for the website, we've got a new barn quilt tour that just got launched last week, and I would love to get more Cambridge barn quilts up, so once that is officially up, which will be this Saturday, I will promote it locally to see if we can get some more Cambridge addresses on it. Our website's about 125,000 page views for the year so far. What else? There's lots of links on my update, everything here is in writing. Thank you for your Destination Madison partnership, I know that Kathy from Cambridge Market did attend the last collaboration meeting, maybe somebody else did too, but then she comes, brings back information to the Wednesday wake-up meetings, and then shares that with our other businesses in town, which is great. Travel Wisconsin, I also post our events on the Travel Wisconsin site, and I have a list of the events, and I don't know, my time is probably up, but I forgot to put the Halloween Costume Parade, which is being taken over by Pleasant Time this year, so that should be really cute this year on October 28th. There's a schedule of the Discover Wisconsin shoot schedule and stuff like that at the end, and if you guys have any questions, just let me know, Lisa knows how to get ahold of me, and it's probably on here on this little update, so.
Carol, what is Small Business Saturday for November 26th?
That's, it's like an American Express kind of a holiday where it's, every year they just kind of have sales.
It's the Saturday, it's the Saturday after Black Friday.
After Thanksgiving, yeah, right.
To promote local shopping.
Right.
So they have Black Friday, and then they have Small Business Saturday for, like, small businesses, you know, like downtown Main Streets.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fun. Should check it out this summer.
I learned something here tonight, so, okay.
Thank you for all you do, Carol.
Yes, thank you very much.
This is great, and thank you for the update.
My pleasure.
Lisa, can we get this electronically so that I can get the links?
Yeah.
Because I could type all that stuff in.
Yes.
I can forward it to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thanks, guys.
Carol, thank you very much. Okay. If you can come up and introduce yourself.
Hello, I am Andrea Masati, I'm a resident of the Vineyards, I'm also the Vice President of the newly turned over HOA for the Vineyards. So, just a couple things. Haven't been here for a couple months, and now that we've got HOA turned over to us, we just wanted to see if there's any status or updates on a few things that were previous. So, one of the things that I was looking for status on was, was there ever a resolution on the draining issues in the Vineyards? So that was one thing. Was there, is there any status or anything going on with having Vulcan remove their garbage still from the subdivision, which in turn will allow Todd to cut the grass that needs to be cut, but they can't do it because their trash is still everywhere. And when I say trash, I'm not talking about water bottles, we're talking about concrete blocks and pallets, and Todd's seen it, so I don't know if anything's been done with that, if the city plans on doing anything.
We contacted Vulcan, and they're working on to find out who owns that equipment. It's one of their general contractors.
Well, it's also garbage, too. It's like the, the black stuff that they put on when they're doing the landscaping, I mean, it's just garbage, and it's all over. And if the village isn't going to do anything, then the HOA has, has talked about it, and we will try and get something done, but we thought, I know there was at some point, because it does interact with the grass cutting issue, because where a lot of that is, the weeds are this high. The other thing that you're here, Todd and I actually talked about all of the broken sidewalks that Vulcan created when they built the homes, and I don't know if the village was going to do anything about fixing those or doing anything about them, because 90% of those homes have broken sidewalks in front of them. I'm here also about the name change, which I know is going to happen tonight. I live on Vineyard Crossing, so I will be affected by this name change. The one thing we're asking is, how is it going to be facilitated? There's only not, there's, I think there's like 10 houses that are going to be affected between the cul-de-sac and Vineyard Crossing. How is it going to be facilitated, about how long is something like this going to take? And can we request that it not happen until after the holiday? Just because with Christmas coming, ordering, having things sent to you, we just don't know how this process is even going to work. So that was one thing, and then, the lastly, I had put into the agenda, which I didn't find out until this morning, goes actually in front of the Public Works Agenda, but it's for the, some type of a street sign for no stopping, standing, parking by where the apartments are. The apartments are part of the HOA, they're part of our covenants, and their tenants are parking in the streets, on either both sides or one side, and when you're making a left-hand turn, I'm sorry, a right-hand turn, to go east on Vineyard Drive, you cannot see anything, the cars are parked in the street, it's obstructed, there are people in the street because there is no sidewalk in front of the park either. So, that, when people are coming off the bike path, they have to be in the street because there's no sidewalk. I didn't know until this morning, Chrissy let me know, that this issue actually is going to be with the Department of Public Works meeting, but just to kind of give you an idea or an update that this is something that we really need to discuss, and I don't know if the children at play sign goes with them as well. We were talking about maybe being able to put a children at play sign somewhere, like right when you first get into the neighborhood, because since I've been there, in the last year and a half, I believe 50 children have moved in, and that's not an underestimate. So, I'm assuming then that, with that issue, then go with the Public Works as well? Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do we have all this, we're going to be taking up some of it later on tonight?
Yep. Right, the name change, I know you were, it was just trying to get back to the people that are going to be affected as to how that's going to be facilitated, and how long something like that's going to take, and.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. One more individual.
For the new and temple 716 Kensington Way. To reiterate what Andrea just said, the sidewalk on the one side of the park, addressing, as we've addressed before, what is the status of the park that's coming in, that was supposed to come in, and who is sponsoring that? Also, the, there's the speed limit signs we gave you, I think, like, four or five minutes ago, we gave you the speed limit signs, we got to get speed limit signs up there, these kids, these people run through there, or drive through there really fast. And we discussed this probably a month ago, six weeks ago, we gave you, I gave you handouts of what the speed limit signs were supposed to be by, in conjunction with the park, but we'd need to get something up there because there's people that fly through there. Is there any intention of putting any more streetlights up in the Vineyards, or who is responsible for that? Like, on the path, by seven o'clock, our neighborhood's pretty well dark, and Todd, you know that, I mean, we've got the, only like three major corner lights, and that's all we have. So, none of the path, the walking paths are lighted, nothing, so, and it's, it's dangerous no matter how you go, and there's coyotes and foxes that run through there all the time, and if you're walking a dog, I really don't want to come in junction with that one of those. The other thing is, the, the three lights that we do have, are you, is Cambridge doing decorating those light fixtures like they do downtown, or are we responsible for that, or who does all that stuff? Got some decoration lights in the park, more streetlights, speed limit signs in the park, and a sidewalk. Anything else?
Yep, to go along with what Andrea said about some of the trash and stuff, those black, those black, I don't know what you call them.
Yeah, we just, we just talked.
There's, there's some that are actually down into the storm sewers, they're plugging up the storm sewer so water doesn't, can't get down into it, creating a flood factor. So maybe if they can be looked at in our, in our area, it'd be great.
We can probably pick them up.
Just.
I think it's time, it's time to pick them up.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
And the good thing, kudos to the, you guys, Todd, the, the additional poopy pickup stations is, seem to have helped the, the Vineyards. Some people don't have dogs, some people, people who do have dogs, it's nice that there's additional poop stations, so that is a bonus to the neighborhood, so I thank you for that, so.
You know, anybody that owns, that has a dog, be caring.
They should be, but they don't.
Well, they should, but there's people that do not.
We, we live on the corner, and every day we pick up two, three, four piles of poop that's not even our dog.
I live on Main Street.
It's a, it's a silly thing.
I mean, it's everywhere.
It's a disrespectful thing.
Right.
You own a dog, you should take care of it, but that's.
You should be a proper pet owner.
Right.
If that's any consolation, I was driving by today, and I saw a person with a good-sized dog, and she's just looking at the dog, and she was away, and it didn't look like she was planning on going over and picking up anything.
I had Great Danes, and believe me, we called them landmines, because they were literally landmines when they went to pick them up, and if it's in somebody's yard, uh-uh, that's disrespectful.
Thank you for coming in today, Brenda and Tim. The only thing I can probably say is that it's doubtful that we're doing anything with decorative lights out there, I think we only do it downtown.
Okay, and that's fine, I mean, just so we know, so if the community wants to do it, but just more lighting would be nice, because there is not a lot of lighting in there. I know that you guys had planted lighting fixtures or electrical?
I don't know.
Well, somebody did, they were placed, electrical spots were put in.
The developer was responsible for lighting.
Okay.
The what?
The developer.
The developer.
So that would be Bill Ringet.
Yes.
So can that be brought up to Bill when he comes in for his?
Well, no, it's turned over to us, no.
Well, no, but he was still, no, he was still in commission then, he's got to be responsible for what he had.
Okay, well.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to, to speak at this, open the public comment here? Okay, going to close the public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see you.
Kathy Franz, 605 Kensington Way, I'm also part of the HOA for the Vineyard. Regarding lighting that Brenda just brought up, according to our covenant, everyone is supposed to have a lamppost in front of their yard that was solar. I've counted nine lampposts in the area, so it's actually that community, if they want more light in that community, they need, we're going to, as the HOA, going to address the, one of the companies that makes those lampposts, to see if we can get a bundle deal, and maybe a reduced cost. But according to the covenant, they, every person should have a lamppost in their front yard that goes by solar, that goes on in the, at like, at dusk, and goes off at dawn. We have one, it works perfectly fine. In fact, I live in the court, and if we don't keep our lights on, on our, the outside of our house, there is, it's completely pitch black in the court. So I think these lampposts would really help for safety features. I know that's nothing that the, that the Village Board has to do with, and it's something the HOA has, is going to address.
I was talking about the, along the pathway.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, the pathway does need to be lit, especially because I'm a, I'm a six o'clock AM walker, and it's going to get dark now, soon.
Thank you for coming in and sharing your light. All right.
Mark, can I just, just real quick, can I just clarify what Brenda had said about the planters in the Vineyards? Because those originally were done by the property manager at the apartments, Bill had him putting them in, they were there for the first year, they all died, so this pasture homeowners who live on those corners have put them in, they've never really been the responsibility of the city, so that's something else that the HOA is talking about is homeowners being responsible for the ones that are closest to their house if they want to put something in, so I just wanted to clarify that, to let you guys know when Brenda asks about that, because that's nothing that the city's ever, or the village has ever done.
I didn't know that.
Oh, and that's why, that's why I wanted to clarify.
Okay, all right, I'm going to close this portion of the, the meeting here for public comment, move on. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Okay, any discussion necessary?
No.
Okay, nothing? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty, let's keep going. President's Report. Really, I don't have anything that I, I wanted to share, other than we had a lot of water here, and our Kashkhanong Creek is, is full of this stuff. And, and the park is, and I see that the Kashkhanong is actually overflowing its banks, but, you know, that's how it goes, it'll drain down, and, you know.
Unless we get more rain.
Unless we get.
Not until Friday and Saturday, Sunday.
Not Saturday. Not a lot on Saturday.
All right. It's not something that, yeah, that we have a whole lot of control over, and, you know, that's just how it is, so, that's my, my president's report message, all right? Yeah, it's going to be you next. Okay, Todd, why don't you come up?
Sure.
You can identify yourself, sir.
I am Todd Lord, Director of Public Works. You missed the water yesterday morning, or Monday, or whenever it happened, I think it was Monday morning, it was, the, the ice skating rink and the river were won, there was no grass, if you see, and it was actually up on the banks. They're working on Johnson Street, they, they milled it down today, and they, they started setting grade. Today's the 13th, right? The 15th, they're, I believe the 15th, they're shutting down the sewer system, so just be aware of that, everybody, please. I think it's for a few hours. Lawn Street and England Street will be paved, will be paved on the 15th, and that, that'll finally get done. I'm pretty much on my own right now, so I am your public worker.
On Lawn Street, I saw the emails, it sounds like you've advised them not to park there.
Yes.
So that the trucks can get in and get it all done.
And if they feel that they need to park, they can park, I told them to park away from it.
Okay.
Did, did we notify Johnson Street that they, about the, okay?
Yes.
Someone posted on Facebook that they weren't notified, so they just must have missed it in their mail?
Johnson Street got letters, Townsend Street got letters, and even Sullivan got letters to tell them that they're going to have increased traffic due to the other two closures.
Okay.
There's plenty of signage to indicate that.
And then what about the sewer outage, have we notified the people who will be affected by the sewer outage?
There's, there should be no effect, it's, it's a couple hour thing, they have to replace a, a part in the, in the sewer system.
But I can still flush my toilet if I'm in.
Oh, yeah, you can, but just, just be aware of every time you flush in your toilet, but, anyway, what they do is they come around, they empty all the lift stations.
Okay.
And then they lock them, they, they shut them off and lock them.
Okay.
Because when, once they're in there and working, they do not want any rush of walk coming at them.
Sure.
So, they're, they're replacing something to do with a separator, or something, something like that, and they need, they need to drain that system and, and, and replace, repair that part and get out of there. They, they figure it to be in, like, an hour and a half to.
So what happens?
At the le, at the most, three hours.
What happens if I'm running my dishwasher, take, and taking a shower during that time?
I, it's not going to be a major thing, it's just, just be conscious that, that, on that day, that there's guys in a, there's guys down, down in those holes working, so.
I got a question.
Or actually in the, in the, in the sewer, in the sewer district.
All right.
Todd, there's a couple repairs that have to be done on Johnson Street before they pave, and that's the depress curb, for the curb that's.
Yep, yep.
Drop down, and then also the curb in front of that, that fire hydrant that's really too close to the road also.
And the people that are doing the, the.
Baby?
The, no, the, the sewer work down on the, or the drain work down on that Townsend, Townsend and Johnson there, we're talking to them to have them go ahead and do that, it's like a six-foot section, and there's one curb that's dove down like that, and they'll just charge extra. For, for what they're going to be doing, it's a minimum charge of five yards for concrete, and they're not going to be using five yards of concrete in one little spot. For, for what they're gonna be doing, it's a minimum charge of five yards for concrete, and they're not gonna be using five yards of concrete in one little spot, so they'll probably be more than happy to add that to what they're doing.
Sure, that's fine.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I was moving on to another subject.
That's what I'm gonna say, said anyway.
Yeah, I was gonna move on to a different topic, too, with Todd, but go ahead.
Yep, me, me too, Todd, okay. Kristi Ann on the garland, the garland.
Already ordered it.
You ordered it?
Yep.
Okay, you talked to her, perfect.
It's all taken care of.
Excellent, and then, and then.
Matter of fact, I just did that today.
Perfect, because we met.
It took me a couple times accounting the streetlights.
The Economic Development Committee met last night, and so that was one of the things that came out of that. And then the cham, the, Cambridge Christmas is the weekend of, of December second and third. So the, the businesses downtown are asking to make sure that the garland is up on the posts prior to that weekend.
She will, she's told me that she would have, she would, she would have it sometime right after Thanksgiving.
Okay, so then, that week after Thanksgiving, you'll be able to.
That's right in the timelines, that we generally do.
And if, if you need assistance, I'll volunteer my husband to help you do that.
You wanna volunteer your husband an awful lot, don't you? We'll get him up in that machine.
No, we will not. It shows purposes, we will not be doing that.
Make sure Shelby's operated.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay.
Todd, I noticed that around town, we do have some raised sidewalks, and they're, they're painted, you know, some color. Is there any plan on grinding those down?
I need, I need to get to the GSI thing, and I haven't had time to work with Scott yet on that, and, because I need to go through every neighborhood and, and identify all, all sidewalks, and even in the vineyard, everywhere, everywhere has to be identified and what needs to be replaced, and and they have to be spotted out on the GIS, it will, it'll, once I do that, it will, you know, it'll show the measurement of how much needs to be replaced, and, and, and the bad spots in the sidewalks, you know, where the bad spots are, and who's, I don't know who's responsible.
We do not do the sidewalks throughout town. That would be letters going out to residents, once we work through it with the engineers and the GIS system. And we let people know they can fix them themselves, or we assess if we fix them. So it's a whole process.
It's a homeowner's responsibility.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Unless it's on village property.
All right, and so then, we're, we're in the process of doing that.
We have to.
As soon as, as soon as I catch up.
Okay, now that kinda gets us into the next, my next question. You said you're the only Public Works employee?
Yeah, Derek had a, an operation today.
Okay.
For tendonitis, so he's out, unknown.
So it's just you?
And Lee.
And Lee, Lee works part time.
Okay.
Boy, boy, am I glad he was still there when that, when that three hundred number came out.
Okay, and you're, you're working, and we'll get the review from personnel.
Yep, yep, that's later on in the meeting.
Okay, all righty, well, keep up the good work.
All right. Thank, thank you so much, Todd.
Yep.
Thanks, Todd.
If you, if you need my.
You just saved it, because I threw that thing on for you.
If you need my number, Lisa has, or Dean's number.
Okay.
I think Lisa probably has Dean's number as well, so, yes.
Okay, Economic Development.
Um, we met last night, we had applied for a grant through the UW, and we did not get that grant. We're looking at applying for a small grant from AARP. We're submitting the grant to get two benches to go out in L, the LBK Park, so that we can put two benches out in that area, and at least have something out there. So we're, we've, we're looking to apply for that grant, and then they, we asked about, and I talked to Todd about the garland to support the Cambridge Christmas. And then the other thing is, I asked Chrissy to take a look at, to see if there's any budget in the Economic Development budget at all, if there's any dollars there. One of the things that's been missing from the Country Christmas the last couple years has been the hayrides, and the wagon and the hayrides. So we're looking to see if there's any money that maybe the village could help and pay for that, but we don't know if we have any money in our budget for that. So that's, that's what we're looking into at this point in time.
Okay, there are questions for Paula? Okay, thank you. Eric, Plan Commission.
Most of what we discussed will be later in the agenda. The one thing that was not discussed, or that was discussed, that's not on this for later, is potential development at the entrance to the vineyards, there's, someone's interested in developing that first, so across the street from the winery, in between the winery and the clinic, and all that stuff, there's some interest in developing that. It's just, there was no action item, it was just.
That will be a public hearing at our next meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Village Office Updates, Lisa?
Um, the August election and the recount has all been finalized, all the state paperwork and so forth, beginning on November elections, ballots will actually be delivered next week. Number of different personnel items. Developers agreement was finalized for Scott Farms, where on this agenda is the developers agreement for TID six. Number of things going with well two, well three, working with Public Works on those. Chrissy finalized some state and local recovery fund compliance documents that are required, and working on the addressing issues. Floor replacement in the old office will be coming up later this month. Working on the bike path, we did have a pre-construction meeting last week for Scott Farms, so that will be beginning shortly. Lots of stuff going on.
Anything on the upcoming election, anything unusual? You guys are all set for that?
Ballots are coming next week, we have some training next week, equipment goes in for maintenance.
We had that safety thing though, about that Dane County safety.
Dane County is working on this last election, they had safety, an ongoing Zoom call all day, so if there were any issues at elections, we could go on the Zoom call immediately, so they were testing that out to have in place for November. So, lot of stuff going on, on the back end to ensure.
What's the policy on absentee ballots? Is there any changes in that?
Um, nope, same as it's been, people have to request them in writing, they can do it on MyVote, or we have forms to fill out, emails can come to me. Once we get ballots, they'll be mailed out, they do need to be returned by mail, in person, by the person, other people cannot bring in. They are making some exception, exceptions for disabled. There will be some new guidelines if somebody is disabled. They can fill out paperwork, authorizing somebody to bring in their ballots, but it's.
But how, if you're sending it back by mail, how, how do you ensure then that that's being sent by the person?
We, that's not our job.
Okay.
If we receive it in the mail, we assume it was mailed back by the person. There's no way we can police that.
Think so. Okay, so you're, you're good to go, the election is.
Stuff going on constantly with it.
Yeah, all right.
A never ending job.
Yeah, that's, that's one that won't stop. All right, any other questions for Lisa? All right, thank you, let's move on. Chrissy, what can you tell us about bills?
There was a lot.
Yeah.
First round of bills was one hundred six thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents. And the second run that was done today is thirty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and nineteen cents, for a total of one, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and forty-four cents.
One second.
All right, discussion?
I have no questions this time, I was shocked.
No, I, I did neither. Yeah, just seems like a lot, but it is what it is, so.
Well, Deerfield was a big chunk of it, Village of Deerfield.
Yeah, they had incentive for.
That's for the shared police services, yeah, I know.
All right, okay, we got a motion and a second, there are no concerns, questions, so roll call, please.
Franklin Whitworth.
Yes.
Colin Beck.
Yes.
Pumbier.
Yes.
Brian Egg. McNally.
Yes. All right, bills are going to be paid, thank you. Uh, let's move on now to some new business and discussion, possible action regarding the Cambridge Resolution 2022-11 related to renaming the streets in the Village of Cambridge. Is this Lisa, or is this Chrissy?
This is Chrissy.
This is Chrissy. Um, I've been working with a Dane County Land Information Office gentleman named Fred. We've been going back and forth, it's been, I have a little I have a, not a scale map. Put it right in front of you, too. And I'll hope it arrives, so you can see it. So, I'm sorry for my back.
Nope, all good.
So basically, what I'm suggesting is, right now, the winery is seven hundred Kenzeth Way, last meeting, we renamed it, or we renumbered it to six hundred Kenzeth Way. If we leave this this way, and left this here, there's a conflicting, a duplicate address in Kenzeth Way. So I propose to change this from Kenzeth Way to Court, but then when I talk to the gentleman Fred at Dane County, he suggested we get rid of the duplicate names. So we already have Vineyard Court, we have Vineyard Drive, we have Vineyard Crossing, Kenzeth Way, and Winery Way. It's very confusing, so I suggested to rename, renumber this, this will obviously leave these lots here, that one is gonna be sold recently, to have an address. So then, it goes six hundred here, then seven hundreds, and then I propose to change Kenzeth Way to Chardonnay, Chardonnay Court, and then as well as Vineyard Crossing, to Merlot Lane, and all the numbers will stay the same.
Can I see the cul-de-sac with Kenzeth Way?
Right, sorry, it's way back here.
So why, in, instead of renaming the, the road, why don't we make them eight hundreds?
We can't do that, and that's worse.
Okay.
It should have been done that.
This is for the EMS, and for the police, and that was a big thing.
I, I've got her.
So, basically, if it was, I hate to say done correctly.
It would have.
These numbers should have been six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred.
Got it, but.
But since weren't.
Now it's easier to change the street name than to change the number.
Yeah, I can read.
Okay, all right.
And then if we just change the name completely, it's less, less confusion.
Yep, that makes sense.
I got it.
All right. Do you see Sauvignon Blanc and Pinot Grigio in our future anytime soon?
Pinot was available, but Sauvignon, no.
No, okay.
Yeah, no.
All right. Do we need a, a resolution, and, you know, we gotta vote on this?
Do we grow Merlot and Chardonnay grapes in Wisconsin? Maybe we should have picked Fronette.
I, I.
I know that's a, I know that's a Northern wine.
I first chose Crimson Concord.
Yeah, good.
But then, they, yeah.
It's all good.
And I actually reached out to the homeowners, so I checked out there, and they, to get their opinion as well.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion on this?
Sure.
All right.
Make a motion to, let's see, approve the Resolution 2022 related to renaming the streets in the Village of Cambridge.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Timeline.
Basically, once this resolution passes, I do have to go get it recorded. So once it gets recorded, then after that, it gets back to Dane County for them to give me permission to submit the change into Dane Ca, Dane Access, and then I submit it also to the Fort Atkinson Post Office, RF Post Office, and the Milwaukee Post Office, and they actually have a back door, is what they tell me. It's like a back door area that they can go in and change the addresses, so it's less taxing on residents. It's, it's, I, I recently did it with, what's the street, Mill Street, no, by the shop, North Street and.
River?
Olson Way.
Olson Way.
Olson Way, I just recently did that, and I, I wanna say maybe a month at the most. And so we, we added addresses to that apartment building that used to be a doctor's office, and it went really, really easily.
And when we had to change from North Main to West Main, that, it, it went really smoothly, because, I mean, the post office knows, and, you know, they made concessions for us to make sure we still got our mail and things like that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I, every resident will be notified by certified letter of this change.
Regarding the timing, somebody had earlier mentioned that you wanted it at the end of the year?
For, for safety purposes, I, I, I would, I wouldn't wanna wait. I mean, we've already had two calls out there, that's what kind of brought it to my attention, we've had two EMC, emergency calls, that they went to the wrong location. And it, it, I understand, and it would be frustrating because of Christmas packages, but I have talked to residents out there, when I go out there with the guys and helping them with reads and stuff, and they've mentioned, they all kind of know each other, and if a package from Amazon goes to Ms. Masadi's house, they know it's Mr. Rigel's house. So they kind of have that down right now, but I would say the sooner the better, for safety purposes.
Okay. All right, so we.
How is that gonna affect, like, the Google Maps and all the things, like, our.
Dane County gets it into their system, and Dane County is in charge of all of the, like, the CAD, which is what the officers use. They're in charge, and once that gets into that system, it's in there. And then there's also a way you can, like, I noticed today, when I was looking at a map, they had, what's that place, that bar passed? I'll never remember it.
That one?
The bar, the one that just sold.
Sports page?
Sports page, they have sports page in the middle of the street at QuickTrip. And so then I said, suggest an edit, and then I drug it to where it's supposed to be, and so you, you can see that, too, if you go in and say, oh, that's not my name. Suggest an edit, and then the, the more they get edits, the quicker they'll do it.
I, I, I was on a map yesterday that still showed North Main Street. And we haven't had North Main Street for, I don't even remember how long now, so.
Fifteen years, probably.
Yeah, yeah, so it just, it is.
It takes time to figure.
Just answer your question, Eric, regarding the timing, okay, Paula?
Um, on, on, just on the memo, the recommended and action requested, you do still have Crimson in there.
Oh, sorry.
But, but, but at the end of the sentence had it correct.
Okay.
And, and I noticed on the actual resolution, it, it does say Chardonnay, so I didn't know if that made a difference at all for us.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second regarding the renaming of the streets. I'll call the matter, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, carries, all right. Moving on, Item B, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Appointment of Election Workers, Jody Lynn Grahams and Lawrence Oats. Lisa, anything?
They volunteered to work at the, when they came through at the last election, so Board has to appoint election workers.
I'll make a motion to appoint the election workers of Jody Lyon Grahams and Lawrence Oats.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carries, moving on, Item C, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Cambridge Farm-to-School Park Reservation, October seventh and eighth at West Side Park. Lisa? Anything on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the park reservation for Cambridge Farm-to-School, October seventh and eighth for West Side Park.
I'll second.
Okay, ready to go, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. All right, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Temporary Class B Wine and Beer License, Cambridge Farm-to-School, October eighth at West Side Park.
I'll make a motion regarding the Class B Wine and Beer License for the. I'll make a motion regarding the Class B wine and beer license for the Cambridge Farm to School, October eighth at West Side Park.
To approve that, Ted?
Yep.
I'll second.
All right.
And that's just going to be one day instead of two?
One day. The second day on the reservation is to set up.
Okay.
And they will be working with the police on setup and so forth.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carries. Okay, moving on, item E, discussion on possible action regarding the First Amendment to Declaration of Condominium for the Vineyard Condominiums with Bill Ranguette. And a recommendation from the Plan Commission. Eric or Lisa?
Go ahead, Lisa.
This is, as you know, in the original plans for the subdivision, those condos, that whole area was set aside for condos. The first phase, they built the first units. This is the second unit, or the second phase of the condos. There will be one additional phase later with a few more buildings.
There was no objection at Plan Commission through this. It was already in the plan. The one thing to consider for the next round was the right-of-way permit if necessary.
So how many more big units are going to be built altogether?
This one had six additional units going in. Then there will be three more. The next phase would be three more buildings with two units each.
And, and all of that's per the original.
Per the original plans.
They're going to look the same?
And I did talk to the engineer today and, yeah, all the infrastructure was put in for the original condos and.
How long before they're completely built out, built out of vineyards? Everything is done? Do we know? Have any idea?
I, it, I don't know how fast all the condos will go when they'll come in with the next phase.
Getting closer every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Getting closer every year.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the amendment to the Declaration of Condominium for the Vineyard Condominiums.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other further questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries. All right, moving on, item F, discussion on possible action regarding the first addendum to the Vineyard Condominiums condominium plat.
And this is page number eight of, of that packet. It is the updated plat showing the new, new units and the three future.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the first addendum to the Vineyard Condominiums condominium plat.
I'll second.
All right. Any questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, carries. Thank you. Okay, now let's move on to item ten.
More interesting. It's more interesting, this next item.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Discussion on possible action regarding Blue Jay Way reconstruction. I think we've got a letter in here.
Yeah, we do.
Lisa, what have we got?
A letter from town of Oakland.
I, I like how he, how he like changes history. And, and reconstructed everything to fit his narrative. And, and my question is, to Oakland would be, why are they so insistent on tying annexation of the streets with fixing the road? So let's just fix the road because that's what our constituents need. That's what the citizens of, and the users around that area need. They need the road fixed. So let's just get the road fixed and let's forget all the other stuff that's related to it and address that as a separate issue because it is.
I thought I should also weigh in on the legal argument that they're making in this letter, which is to say that because the intergovernmental agreement talks about the village doing maintenance, of course we intended all of this, that's, as part of what is maintenance. And, you know, if you look at the statute, chapter eighty-four, that's the DOT statute that talks about this. Maintenance, to maintain something is definitely different than to construct it or to reconstruct it. I, I think they really mischaracterize what maintain means within the statute. In fact, this was interesting. The only place in that chapter that even defines maintain is to allow it to exist. Which is definitely, I mean, it applies to signs, it doesn't apply, billboards, it doesn't apply to, to roads. But it, I, I really feel like it was a disingenuous characterization of what maintain means in the statutes.
And it was, because I was on the board when this first came up and we had legal opinions talking about what maintenance means. And that, the decision was that it doesn't mean reconstructing the road.
Exactly.
So that, I, I, that's why I read that letter and I just, I just don't understand where it's coming from. Where the town of Oakland is coming from on this. Let's just fix the road. Let's do what we agreed to in the last joint meeting that we had. In the last joint meeting, we agreed that we would each pay half of the road. Let's do that. Both, both entities have agreed to pay. But didn't both entities pass that? Then I don't understand what the holdup is.
And, and winter's coming. Well, it is. And then we won't get it done this year again.
And then.
And that road will be terrible after another winter.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can I ask of a lawyer, what's the.
Of a gravel road then.
They make reference to sixty-six oh seven oh seven. And they're specifically saying that the town is able to levy on behalf of the village for improvements and such. It's right at the beginning of their letter.
Yeah.
In the first, or second paragraph there. Our intergovernmental agreement is sixty-six oh three oh one, so it's in that same chapter.
Oh, I think the sixty-six oh three oh seven, I think that is the statute that authorizes the formation of the intergovernmental agreement. I'll just check that, but I'm, I'm almost sure that I remember that statute from, from the past. And I think that's the context that.
Would that be a legal argument?
Let's see, one second. Let me just check that.
Sixty-six oh seven oh seven. Zero seven, zero seven. Basic training, if you said oh for your specific number, you'd have to go through again.
Oh, that's, here, one second, it's popping up. That's just the general assessment authority against, that any city, village, or town can, can levy a special assessment.
Okay.
There's nothing about this intergovernmental agreement that changes that statutory ability that we have.
Okay.
And, and while his letter says, we have not refused to consider levying a special assessment, it doesn't say they would. And that, those are two different things, two different entirely statements. So if I'm taking them as a word, it means you haven't refused it, but that doesn't mean you say you will.
So disregarding the rest of the, the letter. So your point last time was, are we going too far with discussion without having a motion to discuss?
There really isn't a motion, I think, to put on that.
Is there anything to even, anyways. Your, your point last time was that you wouldn't want to pay because there were houses that aren't ours that we can't.
Assess.
Assess. Would this, if we were to get some sort of guarantee that they would assess, would that alleviate those fears for you?
No, because quite frankly, the village of Cambridge cannot afford the costs related to annexing those roads at this time.
Okay. They do also mention that bringing it up to the village standards. Is that something that we are required to do for our ordinances? I know we've talked about this before, but.
If we were to reconstruct it.
Right.
Yes, but not if we are just maintaining it under the intergovernmental agreement.
The same thing, they mentioned Billstead Road. We haven't reconstructed Billstead Road. If that road needs to be reconstructed, would we be looking at bringing it up to village standards?
Yes.
Yes, at this point, it hasn't been reconstructed. We've also talked about the discussion that was the intent of the intergovernmental agreement, that the village would be annexing homes and the streets. When the intergovernmental agreement goes on numerous times to say annexations will not be forced. Was it assumed that homeowners would want to annex in? Possibly. But as we've discussed, an intergovernmental agreement can't dictate what's going to happen in the future that, and you can clarify that a little bit, but.
Yeah, the statute sets the process. The intergovernmental agreement can't set the process.
And there's also that the sewer lateral, excuse me, sewer lateral on Blue Jay Way has to be replaced at some point. So, I mean, we can, we can pave over it right now, but at some point, we're going to have to tear the road up again to put this, a new sewer lateral in. And at which point, I think we really need to bring it up to village standards at that point.
But we don't know when that's going to happen.
Yeah.
So let's, let's not, let's not do Christopher, I'll look in the future right now.
Well, ten years ago, we were supposed to replace that lateral, so.
At the joint meeting, it was to create a subcommittee to look at one, short-term goals of taking care of Blue Jay Way and then after that, looking at long-term goals. And the short-term goal was to split the cost.
I get the feeling that we should do something, and it's probably just filing back a, you know, a letter. I don't know if we have to send it to the paper like they are trying to do. And we just reiterate what we're saying, which is, we, we thought we had an agreement and we weren't talking about doing any of this annexing and, you know, leaving that alone, get through the first part of it. And, and, and that's where we're at. I, I don't know what else to say.
I think they know where we're at. They, we, you wanted to offer another meeting and they said, no, we won't meet with you.
Right, do we have to reply? Because they've already said, no, they won't meet with us, so.
Um, so.
Well.
I think maybe what you could do is just send them a letter that says, let me know when you've contacted the, the.
Contractors.
Contractor to fix, to, yeah, fix the road and our half has been already approved by the village board and I'll be happy to write a check.
Send them a bill when it's all done.
Well, they've got to do it.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. And they have one taxpayer in that road, is that correct?
Two.
Two, oh wow.
All right.
Can you, can you come up with that then, Lisa? I feel like we should send them something and.
Our money's waiting for you to spend it. That's what we should send them. We've got money, it's waiting for you to spend.
This is the reason why people are just suspicious of government, but I get it. So there's not a lot else we can do.
They've just gone back and forth like they've done for the last twenty years.
I, I'll just be quiet. Okay.
Smart.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to item B, the fire mission update, Fire EMS. We are in the process of working on budgets. We have a budget from the fire department, we have a budget from EMS, with the exception of one big expense. And we're trying to get the insurance nailed down. So we expect that we will have something here by the end of the week. We could, we, we're, we'll figure it out. We just don't have it yet. The insurance companies are not giving us what we needed to, to have for a definitive. So the budget is being worked on. Going to move on, correspondence. I don't see anything, so we'll pass on that. Upcoming meetings, September fourteenth, Library Board, September twentieth, Water and Sewer, and September twenty-seventh, Village Board. These are upcoming meetings and questions referrals to staff, future agenda items. Anybody have anything here?
I did have a question and I forgot to ask Todd. The garage that was going to be built down by the mulch piles and whatnot. Have you made any progress with, with that project of building that garage down there?
That, that will be later in the season.
Okay.
It'll be more towards like January.
Oh, okay.
December, January.
Okay.
He said that they're running behind, so.
I just hadn't seen progress, so I thought I'd ask, sorry. Yes, you did. It looks very nice down there, uh huh.
Oh.
I have an item. The library is going to meet tomorrow and I know we're going to talk about another trustee here. But I was thinking maybe just going, because I don't know where they're at in their budget process. Just going to the library meeting, but if, if somebody else wants to go, they can go. Does anybody else care to?
I can go if they want.
If, then I would suggest that we have Ted go to the library meeting, because I think they're in the process of starting their budget. And I, I just don't know where we're going to be at with the new trustee, so I make a motion that Ted be our library representative.
No, you can't make a motion. It's not on the agenda, but he can go on behalf of the village.
What time is that meet? Six thirty-seven?
Yeah, you can go, Ted, you just wouldn't be able to vote, but then at least you'd be able to.
Bring it back to us.
Bring it back to the village and maybe give them the village take on some things as well.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you. Anything else for future agenda items? Okay, we'll, we'll move on. Item fourteen, convenient to.